I think he, uh, I think he had his hand under it. I think that's the affidavit of service there. He handed it to him. Do you mind if I see what you just served is? Mr. Chairman, I looked at the, well, served and I have two of the orders. I noticed you have there's on the agenda, reading and explanation. Is there anything that you need me to do this time? Do you want me to read it for you? I'd be glad to do that or explain anything from the orders. The first order, if you have a sheet, looks like this. It's, uh, case number 91 CP 17 274. That order essentially deals, the topic there was, was hauling dirt and doing work on private property essentially. And, uh, some citizens and some, some, uh, businesses brought a suit against the county and the county council at that time to, to keep that, that from happening. And I will read the, um, if y'all want me to, I'll be glad to read the kind of lengthy. But I can read the order part. Um, it's hereby ordered a judge and creed that the practices, practices set forth here and above are clear and correct violation of South Carolina Constitution, United States Constitution. All this specified here and above, talking about the practice of doing work on private property, hauling dirt specifically in that instance. It's further order that Dillon County its duly elected public officials and its employees, agents, servants are permanently restrained and enjoined from hauling dirt to and dumping and or leveling dirt on private property at public expense. It is further order that Dillon County its duly elected public officials, employees, agents, and servants are hereby permanently restrained and enjoined from constructing, scraping, leveling, or otherwise maintaining driveways located on private property in the county. It's further order that Dillon County its duly elected public officials, employees, agents, and servants are hereby permanently restrained and enjoined from constructing, leveling, scraping, or otherwise maintaining private roadways and avenues located in Dillon County. It's further order that in the event of a natural disaster or emergency, the defendants may provide and the defendants' account may provide such material, labor, and services that are necessary to, to the, uh, public health and safety. This contemplates the use of public equipment, personnel, and material on private property in the event of a hurricane, tornado, an acid explosion, or some other kind of natural or man-made disaster which creates conditions threatening the public health and safety. It's further order that nothing contained herein shall be construed so as to preclude the dedication of, on public record by private landowners of roadways and avenues within the county. County roadway should be, uh, as county roadway should be private property owners which cede to, to the county. In other words, somebody wants to give us a roadway and the county needs it. We can do that and then we can work on the property is what he's, is what the order says. But it has to be recorded, uh, in the clerk of court's office in a permanent nature. It's further order that the injunction contained herein is of a permanent nature and shall apply to all future duly elected county council members, employees, public officials, agents, and servants of the county as well as the county itself. Now, the second order, uh, does refer to that order. So give me just a second there. Get a drink of water. In this order, what happened in this order is the county, county council brought in action to, for the judge to determine whether their county E911 roadway service and, and policies violated this previous order. And the judge found that it did. And the order, it makes some findings of facts. And it says Dillon County policy regarding E911 roadways violates the order dated July 8th, 1992. This order that I just read in part two. That Dillon County has violated the order dated July 8th, 1992. That the use of county equipment and personnel on cemeteries that are still used for the burial of bodies is improper. That the term emergency as used by the court's order in, in July of 1992 is intended to mean those emergencies that have been declared to be emergencies by some governmental entity. Such as the president or the governor, or some executive agency having the authority to declare emergencies. That the Dillon County council members, or at least some of them, have violated section four dash nine dash six sixty of the South Carolina Code of Laws. And that they have given instruction to county employees. That this practice has continued over a long period of time and has led to the practice of using county personnel and county equipment on private property. Based on the four one findings of facts, it is ordered that the county policy dealing, excuse me, with E911 roadways violates the order of the court dated July 8th, 1992 and is therefore void. That Dillon County is held in contempt of court for violating the order of the court dated July 8th, 1992. When the consent of the defendant, with the consent of the defendant, the court will impose no punishment on any of the plaintiffs for this violation. However, the court issues this stern warning that any further violation of this order will lead to severe fines and perhaps jail time for those who are guilty of such violation. That the Dillon County council members are jointly and severally enjoined from dealing directly with county employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the Dillon County Administrator. And they are ordered to comply with section four dash nine dash six sixty of the South Carolina Code of Laws. Council members shall deal with county employees only through the administrator, except for the purposes of inquiries and investigations. These inquiries and investigations must be approved by a majority of council in advance of the inquiry or investigation. County employee personnel issues shall be handled through the county administrator and in accordance with the county's established personnel policies. Any violations of this section four dash nine dash six sixty of the South Carolina Code of Laws and of this provision of the order may lead to severe fine or jail time for those council members who violate this provision. That the term emergency as used in the order dated July 8th, 1992 is intended to mean only those emergencies that have been declared by the president of the United States, the governor of the South Carolina, or by a public governmental entity or agency having the authority to declare emergencies. That Dillon County is enjoined from using county personnel and county equipment for the preservation and protection of cemeteries until and unless its cemeteries have been abandoned. The court notes that abandon as defined by Black's Law Dictionary defines to give up absolutely, to forsake entirely, to renounce utterly, to relinquish all connection with or concern in. The court finds that a cemetery that is still being used for burial, or one which has been so used for a period of less than ten years cannot be defined abandoned. Dillon County is therefore enjoined from using county personnel and/or county equipment for the purpose of maintaining any cemetery which has been used for the purpose, for the burial of human bodies within the prior tenure period. The count, court has issued an old warning at the time this matter was presented. It is further order that a copy of the transcript of the hearing be attached to the order for the purpose of expressing the court's disapproval of the actions of Dillon County. And should be used by any future judge who may hear a contempt charge. And then the last part of the order said the order of July 8th, 1992 remains in full force and effect. And I will point out, just for information, I thought I had it, the code four dash nine dash six sixty. The statute that the judge refers to in the order is four dash nine dash six sixty. And it's titled, "The Authority of Council and its Members of the County Officers and Employees." The law in this regard states, "Except for the purposes of inquiries and investigations, the council shall deal with county officers and employees as a subject to the direction and supervision of the county administrator solely through the administrator. And neither the council nor its members shall give orders and instructions to any such officer or employees."
Thank you for explaining. Does anybody got any questions they'd love answered?
Yeah. Can you clarify the difference between a conversation and directing? It's two different things. Because there's a misconception of council members not being able to have a conversation with county employees. There's a difference in having a conversation and directing somebody on what they do.
Well, it would be hard for me to make that, a determination about that without knowing the, the, what the conversation is about and the facts related to the conversation. But what I would, what I would think is that dealing with the employees is, is having a conversation about county matters. Judge may disagree with that, but that would be my interpretation of it.
Well, because there's a misconception of, you know, county employees speak to the council about being terminated and all that. That's foolish. I mean, they live in the county. Um, you know what I'm saying? So they have just as much right to talk. We can't direct them. I understand what the law says in four dash nine. I've looked it up. I'm looking at it right now. Four dash nine says, again, just read, with the exception of inquiries, which means to ask a question. How can I ask a question if I can't have a conversation?
But the, but the order says that the inquiry or investigation has to be voted on and approved by the entire council. In other words, you have to be given authority to do that.
So there's no county employee that can come to a county council meeting and have a conversation?
They shouldn't. It's not about county business.
Sit down with the judge. Not, he, he, that's not the way he explains it to me, but I think he should come and explain it.
Any other questions?
Anybody got anything else? If not, we'll move on. Next, some of the agenda is according to McCall, Palmetto Board of State. Before I went to Palmetto Board of State, I went, I was in Waterbury County.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was in Tugalo, but I've done maybe three or four cities and I don't remember some of the cities. It's probably not real good. So I see, sometimes I see some of my citizens and they say, you're, you were on my junior counselor, you were my senior counselor. But it's an honor to speak about Palmetto Boys State and kind of what the program does. And thank you for allowing me to address the council. Palmetto Boys State, as we know, is a nonprofit that it focuses on empowering young men to learn about the government. And we have a counterpart, um, that's Palmetto Girls State. And, um, obviously what I say about Palmetto Boys State will be the sister in Palmetto Girls State. And I don't, I don't, I think we have one other person in Dillon County that was a senior member. Um, and that's also on staff now. That's Grayson Granger. Um, that obviously is not here, but that would be able to speak about it as well. But over the last five years, what we've done at Palmetto Boys State, and I'll address like, what is Palmetto Boys State? It is a group of about 2,000 guys all across South Carolina. How we select the guys from Palmetto Boys State differs from school to school. Here in Dillon, what we do is teachers nominate. Um, the guidance department selects the kids that they nominate based on how many nominations, based on your teachers. And the legion comes in and they, um, interview those students on a list of questions they may have. And based on the points, that's how you get to go, um, at every school here in Dillon County. In other schools, what they do, if they see some kids maybe lacking around or maybe get suspended, the principal will send those students in some parts of the state in order to spark maybe a, you know, something that may inspire them. And so what we, what we learned in Dillon, I think in 2018, is we didn't have enough funds in order to send on a certain amount of number. I think we had one go from the Christian school, one girl, one boy. We had one, two boys go from Latta, one girl. One, we sent from Lakeview and the Legion didn't have enough money, so Nichols picked it, picked them up. And, um, Dillon was able to send, um, two boys, two girls. And so the numbers have kind of been all over the place previously. And what we've been able to do in the last five years has been remarkable. Um, we was, we, what I did in 2018, I brought all of them to the county school board meeting. And, you know, talking about Palmetto Boys State, I mean, I can talk about Palmetto Boys State all day, but, you know, eventually you kind of get tired of hearing me speak about it every year. So what we did is we brought the students that had gone and everyone spoke about their experience. And, um, I mean, it, it really just shocked the room for our school board members. And, um, they didn't get the experience. Students that really come back and talk about their experience. So they paid for the next group of students the following year. And, um, we were able to send one student every year. Well, with Legion, you know, you start sending one student every year, the money goes pretty quick. So the next year we came back and the county graciously gave, the school boards gave $5,000, 2019. And we picked up the group in Nichols. We took two more students from, um, Lakeview. So now there's four that all go. We took another one from the Christian school and Jamie Hamilton's son was able to go because of that funding that we had there. We were able to send more from Dillon High School, more from Latta. And so we went from about nine to 10 to sending 17 students, um, from the county. And, um, this was such a big deal because, because of those students that was able to go, we had about $525,000 worth of scholarship money right here in Dillon County that those students were able to get. Um, and so, I mean, that's kind of a big deal when you're talking about investing in education. Um, and so what, what we do, and I've gone, been able to be a citizen, a junior counselor, a citizen and a senior counselor. And I think I'm a little too old now. So now I'm on the staff that helps raise money for Palmetto Boys State. Um, and so basically what I'm coming today to talk about is really, um, investing in Palmetto Boys State and Girls State and making sure that we are being active members with our legion to continue to give those funds so that we can continue to send students, um, in Dillon County, that we can continue to invest in education. So.
I saw that. And so those funds would help pay for, for that. It takes about $300 a student to go to Boys State. And I mean, we have such a long list of generous, um, people that give every year.
But the amount that you're able to give, and this is a big question among people. So if we give more money, can we send more students? Well, Girls State is a little different about that. Boys State, we probably can send about four to five students. Girls State is two. It's very competitive. It is, is not because, you know, they're just, it's a difference. It's because of the amount of room at PC. At Anderson is where the boys go. We've gone from row to row. We've made rows. We've used that money to expand their auditorium about three or four times. I mean, that's pretty, that's a big deal. But at PC, there's not much expansion you can do. So we able to send two girls every year and the boys numbers are growing hugely because of that. So if you guys have any questions, I'll entertain them.
Make any questions? Appreciate you giving your presentation. Next on the agenda is Donna Strickland, PD regional transportation authority.
Thank you, Chairman, Council, Staff, everyone else for having, having me here this evening. Um, it's been a little while since I was last here, but I really just come in to share good news tonight. The services that we have in Dillon County are doing extremely well. Um, even, you know, through the pandemic, Dillon County is one that's actually prospered, you know, throughout the service and really only one of the areas kind of maintained the level at which we're doing in Dillon County. I presented a city council. I think that was just last week. Everything's running together now. But, um, one thing I did do there was I realized after I got back the next day that in my Excel spreadsheet, I had two things that were hidden. So I under-reported ridership to the city of Dillon. But, um, but anyways, the services are doing great. Um, so far, we're going into year two, we've had just over 23,000 trips, um, just in the city, just in the county of Dillon here. I shared a schedule there. We have the Dillon Express that runs around the city of Dillon. Um, we're, I should have brought my bus stop in here for the county council to take a look at it. But, um, that's actually a progress, a process we're getting ready to start. Hopefully in Dillon County, very soon, we do have quite a few in, in place now as far as in stock, moral and order. But we started out with politician-style signs throughout and they just don't hang out very long. So if someone goes cuts grass, they pick it up and it never gets put back down. So we went through quite a few of those and y'all would know all about that. But, um, but, uh, so we're looking at the permanent bus stops. Um, the, the route right here in Dillon is doing exceptionally well. The, the Latta, uh, Hamer, Little Rock service is going better and better. You know, pandemic really had an impact, but just looking back over the last six months, we've had between 13 and 15% increase month over month for the past six months. And I think a lot of that's got to do with situation just getting better and better. Um, right now in Dillon County, about 45% of everybody that's stepping on that bus is actually going to and from work, which is bigger than really any other, any other area we're covering right now. That says a lot about the folks that are using the service. Um, and the folks that aren't going to work, there are a lot of them going to Walmart, a lot of them going to CareSouth, MacLeod. They're going to grocery stores, local grocery stores. They're going to pharmacies to get their prescriptions. Uh, we do have a significant amount of senior citizens that's using the service. Um, so the services are going great. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we provide demand response. And a lot of people don't understand what that is, but demand response, they're actually calling the day ahead and scheduling rides. We go to their front door and pick them up from their homes and take them to, to their destinations. And we're doing that throughout Dillon County. That's available to anybody that really needs the service on Tuesday and Thursday that's not on the fixed routes. You actually go to their homes. That, that number is increasing. We have to add more drivers and more buses. We do have buses on order right now, but because of the chip shortage, those, those are late getting in. So, you know, we actually have nine on order. Um, two of those will be coming to Dillon County for the services that, that we have in place. Along with that, Harbor Freight, uh, is now pretty much exceeded. We had one bus running that would hold close to 20 people. It's, it's not holding them anymore. It's a full bus going to and from work. And we're going to have to figure that out to, you know, some of the buses that are coming, we're going to have to figure that part out as far as bringing on another bus and another driver. And, uh, Harbor Freight's really pushing for a couple of other things. Um, it's Harbor Freight, um, do have a meeting scheduled with Purdue to talk about some, some options there. And there's other industry partners that's going to be coming to the table. But Harbor Freight, um, they have a lot of employees in Florence County. Right now, a $4 a gallon, they're having, they're struggling. You know, it's, it's a good little commute in your vehicle. And, uh, so they're really pushing for a parking ride service. Uh, so basically a 35 or a 44 passenger bus at a parking ride in Florence to bring those folks to Dillon to work. Um, as soon as that, as soon as we can figure that piece out, we're looking at Marion County. I'm having good, good conversations in Marion County. Some of you know that we ran a bus from Marion County that had 12 to 15 on it every morning coming to Dillon. And, uh, so that's going to be something that I know will be prosperous wherever we can get that in place. And as soon as that happens, uh, Marlboro County, I mentioned this previous year about just the connectivity between all the different counties. Marlboro County is already connected in Chesterfield County through a connect route. So potentially whenever we have that service going, you could have someone coming from Cheryl or even Chesterfield when that's, when the extra piece is added, they can come all the way, excuse me, to Dillon County. So, um, just kind of wanted to share where we're at. I wanted to thank council, um, and staff for the support that we are getting with this service. Um, there's no doubt that, you know, as this thing continues to grow, it's becoming more and more prosperous for what we're doing for the county. And, uh, just looking to see the continued expansion, more buses, more driver, more fuel being bought locally, um, to help support the local economy. And that's really what, you know, the main, the main vision was. So a lot of expansion coming. You know, we're still trying to build that stakeholder, core stakeholder group. I should know the county's involved. And you all know there's 15 or 20 other stakeholders involved in that to be able to pull it off. But the service level itself, right now, the total cost is over $500,000 a year. What we're bringing to the table, of course, a lot of that is federal funds that for many years we didn't, we couldn't use it. We, we were giving it back. But now that we have the support and we're growing the service and we're looking for more stakeholders, those federal funds will continue to increase as ridership increases.
What kind of number do we have? Like, right, I mean, I know you're doing percentages, but like, how many people ride that thing a day or a week or something like that?
Right now, we're averaging over a thousand a week, I mean, over a thousand a month. Um, and, and just in this past-
That's not accounting the industry now?
No. That's just our regular public service. Uh, Harbor Freight itself is actually doing better and better. Um, will be, you know, when this, when it really takes off and we get this other bus running, we'll be averaging a thousand, pretty much a thousand a month Harbor Freight alone. Um, Mohawk over in Marlboro County right now, we're averaging about 700 trips a month taking just employees to and from work. Harbor Freight's going to see that a lot. Um, you know, with the amount of employees and the area that we're covering, because the Mohawk piece really is just Clough, McCall, and Businessville. So you have more options here. Then we're looking to tie in other counties. So, I mean, this, this service will end up being more than probably what we're potentially can do in Florence when you look at the, the total impact of it.
Do you have over a thousand riders a month, just like Red?
Yeah, we're, we're on, we're just in our second year now at over 23,000 trips. So it's, it's growing, it's growing well. I, I anticipate it to be, right now, we've, we've had a 40% impact because of the pandemic. So every month, if we continue on the trend that we've been on for the past three months, we'll be at 3,000 trips a month before the end of this year.
Somebody here got an appointment to the doctor's office in Florence and they don't have any way to get there. Could they call y'all and pick them up at the house?
So the Florence piece is something we got to work on. That's something we haven't established yet, the connections. And the biggest push has been from Florence to Dillon for workforce. But, uh, connectivity between Dillon and Florence is certainly a possibility. And that same thing goes with the other counties. But, um, that, if that's something that the county would like us to look at, to be able to add, you know, a demand response piece, to be able to cover those trips. I mean, we, you know, we've done a few, um, usually it's a case by case scenario. Someone's going for treatment for cancer or something like that. But as far as just a regular, either fixed route or anyone can call and schedule, we haven't got to that point yet. But that's something that can be a part of the mix as we continue to grow. But I'm really pleased with the workforce because that, people going to earn money, they're spending it locally and that kind of pays for itself pretty quickly.
We certainly appreciate what you're doing. Speaking of which, I know y'all busy.
I appreciate it. Hopefully just continue to, to grow this thing and, you know, be more help for the, for the public to use it. I appreciate it.
Rule number nine now ordinance, first reading, authorizing the interest in sale of non-seeing 2,500,000 general obligation bonds, CBs 2022- CB's 2022B of Dillon County, South Carolina. Fixing the form and details of the bond, provided for the payments of the bond. Authorizing the chairman of the county council and county administrator or interim county administrator to determine certain matters relating to the bond, provided for the payment of the bond, the disposition of the proceeds of the bond and other matters related to the other. First reading, do we have a motion to approve the first reading?
I make a motion.
Yes, sir?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All the favor raised around here?
I oppose.
We don't know this one about it.
What's that?
We didn't go into any detail.
That's a break. Anna said two.
He gets 300.
This is time only on first reading, and then the details will be on the second reading, which will come back. And three to two is a...
That's kind of backwards.
We just want to know what we're voting on.
Yeah. Why would you get details later and you vote on something before?
We vote three times on it, and have a public...
I know that's what happened with Zona.
And it feels epic.
Okay, rule number 10, that finance report.
I don't have a finance report right now.
Administrator's report.
No, I took care of everything.
Recreation required.
Oh, we got three. The first one is from American Legion, Palmetto Boys State, and it is $3,900 a person, and I want to give that.
I give two. I give two, though. I give a hundred, too.
I give two, listen.
I'll give 100, please.
Can I ask your court a quick question? Your court, when we donate this money, do the girls get a part of this money, too?
So with the legion, you do? With the legion, you do? Because the money goes to the American Legion, and so the, because for the girls, it's not as, it's struggling here, the legion controls all the money and all the running for both groups.
She said two girls got it.
Two girls from every school, though, so that's...
Okay, every school, good.
Second request is from Daniel Manning, from the Little Rock Slugger Softball Team, for their upcoming season to asking for donations to help with bats and balls. G has agreed to give them 175 dollars. I don't know if this is a nonprofit or not, G's wife is by, but that's, we'll check into it.
I'll give $1,000, because that's like, I feel out of the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Third one is from The Flames. It is a nonprofit organization, and it's also a softball team, and they're just looking for any kind of donation.
I give 160, okay.
I'm just thinking.
Oh, it's all the recreation, I believe.
Rule number 11, recede the restoration before... Your turn.
Sir.
All the favor raised around here? Hey, can I say something? Chair? Yeah. As far as that bond, we usually take a bond out, have to buy equipment and stuff like that we need, and I think that's what that is, correct?
Correct.
I mean, we usually take a bond out when we're able to help out for our general funds, not quit our general fund, but to help buy equipment if you don't have any general fund. I mean, that's what that's about. You're truly at and designated exactly what we're going to buy with it, that's something we go over, but that's what that is, the bond.
Thank you, Stephen. That's all we ask. We didn't want to know what we're voting on, that's it. You can't raise your hand yes and no if some people have any information.
We've tried to have that ready for you in the next council meeting.
Okay. Excuse me, um, excuse me, um, can I ask a question, please? I've been sitting here, well, last year, since Kent Waiters gave us the benefit of the park, and I've not heard one word mentioned about that park since last year. What happened to the money that Kent Waiters sent? What's going, what you doing with it? He didn't send the money that...
We've been waiting, we supposed to... Let me explain. It's my understanding that the money is in Columbia right now. We were advised this week that we had to apply for the money. No one had advised any of us around here we had to apply for the money. The money is in Columbia, it's designated for the park. We have applied for it this week, so it should be coming in, and I have a quick statement to get it out. It should be coming.
Because I'm at a power Kent Waiters plan out myself, and I'm just, so I wanted to know what was going on with that.
He designated the money, and it's in Columbia right now. We have to apply for the money. No one says we have to apply, but we do have to apply for it. We will apply for the money, and it will be coming, yes, ma'am.
So wait this month?
As quick as the state can get it out.
Okay.
I think Cassidy sent the application off this morning.
Okay. And then we might go to the office to find out for sure, myself.
Yes, ma'am.
And talk to them, guys.
I think it was seen, I think somehow in the shuffle, it got lost, but he sent, they sent us a letter, and Clay was supposed to get that letter filled out and sent back, and he never sent it back. I think a lot of that happened because there was so much discussion on what we were going to do and sort of going with the original project, how we were going to handle it, and now we mentioned something about scheduling a public hearing for the citizens down there, and all of that stuff got lost in the shuffle. But that is something that we do need to revisit, because that is money that was allocated for that park, and citizens want to see that happen, because I want to see that happen, because that's what we went and gave them the proposal for. So we probably need to talk, come to grips. With approving the project and going here, we already picked an engineer. The engineer's been waiting on us for several months to even stamp the drawings, because we can't get a consensus of council to say, okay, let's let the engineer stamp the drawing. We agreed to pay, I think, something like $26,000 to stamp him, and he's waiting on us.
Can we, you know, can we ask the comedian, look at it again, if you're, something we need to do?
We've made a recommendation, the comedian, you ain't got no money, you can't do nothing without no money.
We've...
You say your money's in Columbia.
Money is in Columbia, and it is designated for down here. We did call to find out it was designated here, but they had to send us the application. We had to fill out the application and send it back to them.
Yeah, so the money's, the money's not actually sitting in the county, but it's at no fault of the senator, and it's at no fault of the previous administrator, promised twice to send that application in, and he never sent it in.
Well, now I know why Clay was down there. That's surprising.
Yeah, so that's the issue.
That's the problem.
Make a motion, Judge.
Make a motion.
Yes, sir. All the favor raised around here?
Well, just I couldn't get it in on the beat.